The October 15th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of city council meetings, the council provides an opportunity for citizens to address the council in a very relaxed, kind of spontaneous format that we call open podium. This portion is the half hour before the start of each council meeting. Council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month. If you wish to speak to us during that open podium period of time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we will do unscheduled speakers. You do need to know these portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, again, contact the city manager's office. The first thing that we have on the agenda tonight is a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Eden Prairie Eagles High School Marching Band. And I think we have some representatives of the band here. If you'd come up to the podium, and I will come down and read the proclamation. Whereas, the Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band of Eden Prairie High School was established on September 9th, 1963, and whereas in 2013, the Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band of Eden Prairie High School celebrates the 50th anniversary of their formation. And whereas, the Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band is made up of students from the Eden Prairie High School Band Program ranging from 9th to 12th grade, who are all dedicated as a team to the high standards and goals of working towards unity, artistry, and excellence. And whereas, Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band is led and directed by Scott Palmer, Mike Whipke, and Liz Jackson. And whereas, with the overwhelming support and commitment of parents, volunteers, and Eden Prairie High School, the 160 members of the Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band form a team of nationally recognized musicians. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota hereby proclaims Monday, October 28th, 2013, as Eden Prairie Eagles Marching Band Day. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lilly. Hi.
Hi.
Did you want to say yours?
Sure.
Yeah, please do.
Well, I just want to say, on behalf of the high school band program, we are honored to receive such an award. These students exemplify the pride and the commitment and the determination in what it takes to be a really exemplary music student. So, we are very proud to accept this award, and we'll see you all on the 28th for the indoor marching band concert. It's at the gym at the high school at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
I know while Mayor is coming back, I'll just make a comment that all three of our kids were in the marching band, and it was a fantastic experience. And we were band Sherpas for many years, and we really enjoyed all the camaraderie with all the parents and all the students. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to add?
Mayor, I don't, it's not necessarily items to add, but a couple of the golden rod items are some slight changes to some items that I'll mention really quick. I guess technically, we do have one item to add on consent. Item J is for Phase 2 of our fiber expansion project throughout the city to our remote sites. And we now have plans and specifications and construction agreements attached, but the item is still the same that was originally in the packet. But we also had to go back to Phase 1, which was, Phase 1 dealt more with fiber to our liquor stores. Phase 2 is fiber to our fire stations and to our senior center. And we're assigning our construction agreement to the same company that's doing Phase 2. It's a housekeeping item that we need to add. So, we would have a K on consent. Now, the other two quick things are, on St. Andrew Haven, there are some very minor changes to the lot frontage waivers on the golden rod as compared to in the packet. I think it stays within a foot or two, something like 82 feet to 83 feet, for instance, on the lot frontage on Lot 4, and 40.2 feet instead of the, I believe it was 38 on lot frontage for Lot 2. So, you can refer to that sheet for the waivers, but nothing major. And the last thing is, under the reporter community development director, there was a change in the deposit amount in the assignment of the lease for Ace Day Care. That's just a different amount for the deposit that we have for that item. But on all those items, the content and gist of the item, it's all the same.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council workshop held on Tuesday, October 1?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have to abstain, I was out of town. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held that same date? Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, I abstain. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar items, A through K?
So moved.
Any to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. It brings us to our first public hearing, which is the resolution approving all special assessments presented in the fall of 2013. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this time of the year is customary for the city council to levy any special assessments for various projects throughout the city, and that have been identified over the previous 12 months. This year, the list mainly covers supplemental assessments. For instance, you'll see out of the total number of assessments that total almost 550,000, the vast majority of them are, almost 80%, is due to just one recent project, Reader Ridge, the trunk sewer and water assessments that you'll see, and also some assessments for some other projects in the city for SAC and WAC and trunk sewer and water. And so, the council establishes that amount and conducts a hearing, and those assessments are levied on the properties for the following year. In this case, the assessments with the different terms would start in 2014. And there are a few smaller ones on there related to contracted removal for trees, or snow, or weeds, or grass. But we still need to conduct the public hearing here from the public, and then you would approve this assessment roll to then be certified this year for taxes in the following year.
Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on these special assessments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing for the approval of the 2013 special assessments and adopt the resolution approving the special assessments presented in the fall of 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is a resolution vacating a drainage and utility easements as dedicated in plat of lots 3 and 4 blocks to Cedar Hills West. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a vacation of a drainage and utility easement for the Reader Ridge project, the new home construction project near Eden Prairie Road and Flying Cloud Drive in southwest Eden Prairie. The drainage and utility easements were originally dedicated with the plat of Cedar Hills West. The new easements would be dedicated for the plat of Reader Ridge. And the release of the resolution vacating those easements would be conditioned upon the recording of the plat for Reader Ridge.
Any questions for Mr. Getchell? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of these easements? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating the drainage and utility easements as dedicated in the plat of Cedar Hills West, embraced within lots 3, 4, Block 2, Cedar Hills West, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Our final public hearing is regarding St. Andrew Haven. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have a request for planned unit development concept review and district review, zoning district change from R 122 to R 113.5 in a preliminary plat of 1.716 acres into four lots and one outlot, and this is a property, a parcel located at St. Andrew Drive, basically near the intersection of St. Andrew Drive and Baker Road. And the notice was published in the October 3rd edition of the Eden Prairie News. The development here proposes to the creation of four single-family lots and one outlot. The outlot would be deeded to the city for the protection of the wetland area, and the net density of the project is 2.67 units per acre. There are waivers that were requested for lot frontage, lot width, and setbacks. The Plan Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of this project at their September 23rd meeting. And I believe the project proponent, I believe it's Dave Anderson representing this development, will come forward and give a brief overview, and then staff and the project proponent can answer any questions that you have regarding this residential development.
Come forward. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Dave Anderson. Dave Anderson is here, he's the developer of the project. I'm Peter Knabaly with Terra Engineering, representing the developer. We're responsible for the design of the project. The project is relatively straightforward. The, again, we went through Planning Commission and had gotten unanimous approval. The reason we wanted to do a PUD versus a straight plat is due to the unique shape of this property. It's got streets on a couple different sides, and it's got the wetland on the south side. And the issue was, based on the request for the setback variances and the side setback variances, allows the houses to be closer to the street.
Could we get a map thrown up on the?
Do you have, do you have a plat map?
Yes.
Well, it just seems like it's going to be impossible to follow on television without some kind of a map.
All right. Go ahead.
And again, the, we are asking for variance to the side setbacks and front setback requirements that were in the 13.5 zoning district. That would allow us to keep the houses further forward and be further away from the existing wetland that's on the property, and save trees that are on the rear of the property. So, by allowing that, we're, we think there's a significant reduction in tree removal as part of that variance request. So, again, we're asking for a four-lot subdivision. All the lots exceed 13,500 square feet, which is the zoning next door. We've got fairly low tree removal rate. I think ours shows 13% tree removal, and we might be a little less than that, too, once we custom designed the homes for the individual sites. And we're, sewer and water is available to the property, storm sewer, stormwater is being handled through a rain garden infiltration basin that we're designing for the property, too. And with that, we're just here to answer any other questions the council may have. I think one question that came up at Planning Commission that we, I'm not sure if we answered, was on the value of the packages, homes that are going to be built. And we expect them to be two-story homes that are going to be comparable to the neighborhood. And they could range anywhere from about 425,000 to, I think, about 550,000 to 575,000.
Thank you. I'm glad you talked about tree removal, because driving by the site, I was struck with what a great barrier there are. There is a long Mitchell or Baker Road there. Is that pretty much going to stay intact, that cluster of trees? It's, none of the trees are real huge, it's just a mass that is wonderful.
Yeah. And the intent is to save all the trees that are budding Baker, because we want it, we want to provide screening, too. And also, on the south side along St. Andrew Drive, those trees along that wetland will be saved, too.
Wonderful. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I have one question on the five-foot setback for Lot 2. On Lot 1, it seems to be just a point, which doesn't worry me as much, and on the other side, it goes up to, you know, what looks like quite a bit of area. But on Lot 2, that five-foot setback seems to me to be very close to the other home. And especially if you're putting large homes on the lot, a five-foot setback seems to be not enough. What is your justification from going from the 10-foot setback to five-foot setback there, instead of simply making a five-foot less white house?
Well, we're showing, again, the, we could do that, provide narrower homes. We're trying to keep the, use standard home packages. And when I laid those on the property, it, again, it allowed us to have those homes further forward by having that narrower setback. We are going to propose, we are proposing five on one side and 10 on the other, so there's going to be a minimum of 15 feet between the homes. And we think that's adequate.
It's usually 10 and 15, however.
Right.
Would you just put that house a little bit to the north, northeast?
Can we get the map back? Yeah, I'm really concerned that in a large house, that's simply too close. And I know you want to use packaged homes and whatever, but you're not keeping them in the moderate range. So, when you're getting to the 400, 500, almost $600,000 homes, you're building very large homes right next to the neighbor where you've just barely got enough room to mow.
Sure.
And, you know, that piece of it, I guess, I'm not willing to support on that one situation. The rest of it, I'm fine with, when it's just a point.
On Lot 2.
On Lot 2. The one on Lot 1 seems to me a smaller piece that's different than the one on Lot 2.
In Lot 1, you're right, it sides against that bigger open area where the townhomes are.
Right, and it looks like it's more than just a point that comes close. But on Lot 2, technically, if we give you a five-foot setback, this shows the garage is just going over there, but there's nothing that says the whole house couldn't be five foot, feet away.
Correct. And there's also nothing to say that the same home couldn't be pushed back another five or 10 feet, and you would fit the same home on. If you look on the grading plan, though, on Sheet 6, you can see that the bulk of the tree massing is on lots 1 and 2. And there wouldn't be any additional restriction to build that same home on Lot 2, 10 feet back, and take additional trees down. I would prefer not to do that, but again, it's up to the council how they want to decide that.
Why can't you put it north, north a little bit?
Yeah, just shift it.
Well, you could. The way it's set up now, it's, the way those lot lines are set up, the corner, that north corner of Lot 2 is right on that 10-foot setback.
Right, so if you made that one five feet, and the other one 10 feet, then, I mean...
Yeah, that would be less, well, but then they still could do a home, you can't assume it's this particular home. Anytime you give them five feet, they can do whatever they like, five feet.
Correct.
They could just make a huge house that followed the five-foot line all the way around. It might not be what you or I would pick, but it, somebody could. Or they could put on porches, or decks, or whatever. And, you know, if we're trying to keep this in the moderate range for homes, and they're going to be able to do that in the 250,000 to 300,000, I'd say okay with five feet. But not when you're building large homes, it's going to have one just towering over the next, too close.
Are these driveway locations set in stone?
They are not. No, they're just examples based on the house styles. All four homes will be custom designed and custom-built for four different families.
Which is why I think you could...
What about split the difference and do seven and a half, seven and a half?
That would be fine with us.
Would you be okay with that, Kathy?
Councilmember Nelson?
Well, sort of. I just, in Eden Prairie, our rules have always been, we sort of, with large homes, we've sort of kept to our setbacks, unless there was, you know, a huge tree you were trying to avoid someplace, or it maybe was just a point because of an odd-shaped lot. But that's not what this is. And you start doing it five-foot for a large home, and you're going to have to do it everywhere. And we have kept to not doing that. And I don't see any mitigating reason, other than simply the price of the home you can put on, and cost has never been a reason for a justification for the variance. And so, like I say, on the one, it's a point, though I guess on that Lot 1, you could run the whole works closer to it. But, you know, I guess we can't count on the plat there, too. But certainly on Lot 2, I'm not willing to do it. And I might, you know, not be completely willing to do it on Lot 1 on the south side. North side doesn't bother me. But on Lot 1, you could literally have the house going five feet on either side. And these are custom homes. You know, that also includes decks and things, which is nice. But we have made, you know, unless we're trying to do something special, we've pretty much kept to the setbacks, and that's why you don't have quite the McMansion look, you know, with little teeny bits of land between it. And this could turn into that. So, I like that they're doing something with that piece of land and trying to keep trees, but they also have a certain amount of trees they can't cut anyway. So, if these are custom-built homes, it can be five feet narrower.
Mr. Getchell?
I think, Mayor, also to add, as you know, this is, the plat hasn't been developed yet, and while the homes are not yet there, the property lines have not yet been drawn. So, whatever direction maybe you provide on what you prefer for distances between the houses on what lots, they may have some room to maneuver with even the drawing of the property lines as well.
So, is that something that could be done before a second reading?
Correct, correct.
And prior to final plat?
Prior to final plat. But, yeah, but I think what could help is that direction, like Councilmember Nelson is saying, in terms of what are the minimum distances you're, you're acceptable to the majority of the council, and then the proponent can redesign the plan to fit within that spirit of what you want to see.
Yeah, it's just, we've required this, you know, for 20 years, and on every single other neighborhood in Eden Prairie. And I just don't see the justification for a change in this one without hardship.
Ms. Jeremiah.
Your Honor, council members, I just want to point out as well that it would also be possible to condition the variance on just that portion of the house, that's the garage, and not allowing any living area, you know, to have a variance. So, just some thoughts for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the proponent? Otherwise, we'll open it for the public hearing. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on St. Andrew, Andrews Haven? No? Okay. Does anybody want to put a motion on the table?
Well, let's see. I will move it with the changes of not the Lot 2 variance to five feet.
So, you could make the motion, and then that could be a direction to staff?
Um, yes.
Or a condition of approval?
Condition of approval that Lot 2 not be the five-foot variance on there. The rest of them, I'm more content with, and they should look at that south five-foot variance, what we're willing to deal with on Lot 1, since right now, it looks like a point. But if it was not, I might feel a little differently.
Are you comfortable with encroachment or needing the variance for non-living space, as Ms. Jeremiah suggested, a five-foot setback for a garage only?
Well, possibly. But I, we would still have decks and everything else that could go into that five feet, you know.
Not if we say it can't.
Well, I suppose so. But then the next owner comes, and they say, "Why can't I have this deck off to the side? It would be perfect." It's right off the whatever room. And, or, you know, "Why can't I add a full playhouse thing?" It's, it's not always just for the original builder, but it's for the people who live down the road, and the people who live next to them down the road.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion, then, and incorporate those conditions?
Let's see here, the, get to the right two pages between this golden rod one. Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 1.7 acres and approve first reading on the ordinance for planned unit development. District reviews and waivers and zoning district change, R 122 to R 113.5 on 1.7 acres. And the, adopt the resolution for preliminary plat and 1.7 acres into four lots and one outlot, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, one of which to be Lot 2 having at least a 10-foot setback.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrub?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens?
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution approving the submittal of I 35...
W.
W. That's what I thought, that 2 was wrong. I 35W, I 494 interchange improvement project for consideration by the state of Minnesota, 2013 corridors of commerce program. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are being asked by the I 494 Corridor Coalition, of which we are a member, to pass a resolution supporting the I 35W and I 494 interchange improvement be a project brought forward under a new program from the state of Minnesota called the Corridors for Commerce Program, which was recently unveiled this year. And I'm sure, actually, Councilmember Aho may want to add something to this as well, because he is the actual chair of the commission, so he can add to this also, as he would have been at the meeting where this was discussed. But the state came through with a new program called Corridors of Commerce, where they provide funding to large, larger highway transit, even railroad corridors that are moving many goods and services through Minnesota, and there will be a pot of money available where government agencies can apply for certain projects. And at least with the commission that we belong to, and a project that would be supported to bring forward is interchange improvements to I 35W and I 494. And previously, you may recall, the commission played a very active role in supporting our 169 494 improvement as well. So, while this, the physical location of this inner improvement would not be in Eden Prairie, it would certainly be a benefit to residents in our city that travel in that area, and people that are part of our business community as well. So, the, all the members of the commission are being asked to pass this resolution and support and forward it on to MINDOT.
So, if I might, could I just add a little bit to that? So, as being chair of the 494 Corridor Commission, as Rick mentioned, one of my big priorities with the organization is, is the 35W 494 interchange, like he mentioned, even though it is not in, within the boundaries of our city, it does affect many of our residents. And so, currently, MINDOT does not have it on their STIP or their, on their plans to reconstruct that interchange, even though they've known that it needs to be reconstructed for many years, just due to funding limitations. And so, this new program offers us some new hope that we might be able to gain funding for it. And so, that was one of the reasons that we really wanted to press forward with this and have the cities approve this, this letter, and send this recommendation forward to MINDOT and to Commissioner Zelli. And so, that's, that's why we're bringing that forward today. And some of the things that we mentioned in the letter are metro capacity, over 500,000 vehicles travel through this interchange daily. The interchange is heavily congested for four to five hours per day. The accident rate is more than double than the metro average crash rate. It's an, it's an interregional corridor capacity, so 35 being what it is, connects, you know, all the way from Texas to Minnesota, state freight bottleneck, and IRC system preservation. So, the interchange will remain one of the top busiest interchanges in the state, even if it is reconstructed. you know, all the way from Texas to Minnesota, state freight bottleneck, and IRC system preservation. So, the interchange will remain one of the top busiest interchanges in the state, even if it is reconstructed. So, that's, that's kind of why we're pushing forward with this and hoping to, hoping to move it, move it ahead.
Good. Sounds like a worthwhile project and just another in a long string of transportation improvements that we've needed in the community. So, thank you for your work on that commission.
Welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Aho or Mr. Getchow? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt the resolution approving the submittal of portions of the I-35W-I-494 interchange improvement project for consideration by the state of Minnesota, 2013 corridors of commerce program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The last item tonight is a lease assignment for city-owned property. Mr. Getchow, are you doing that, or Ms. Jeremiah?
Your Honor, Councilmembers, the current tenants of the property, Ace Day Care, are selling their business to Rhoda Farah Mohammed of Lighthouse Day Care. And Ms. Mohammed is an Eden Prairie resident for the past thirteen years. She has children in the Eden Prairie schools. She has been a certified medical assistant at All About Children in Eden Prairie for ten years, and the assistant director for two years at Baraka Childcare Center. So, she does have a lot of experience. And the current lease requires the city to approve any assignment, and that is enclosed. Rick didn't mention the change on the Golden Rod. And the current rent is fourteen dollars a square foot, or sixty-six thousand five hundred annually. We would not be changing any terms of the agreement. There would still require a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day notice, should the city decide we need the property for any other purpose, and the opportunity to renew the lease in 2015. And David Lindahl is also here, if you would have any specific questions.
Okay. Thank you. I know that we acquired this property because of improvements that we made to Single Tree Road, and so, we ended up with this property, but I don't particularly think the city should own it for any long-term period of time, and I would just like to have clarification of the new tenants, their level of awareness of the fact that we intend to sell this at some point, in the near future, hopefully.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, yes, the tenants are aware of that. They were interested in the idea of the potential to renew, but they are aware that the city may decide to sell the property, especially if there's a redevelopment proposal that's imminent. We did want to hold it for a couple of different reasons. One was that the price that we would have had to pay for the right-of-way was so extraordinary, it was really almost as much as just buying the whole property, as I recall. And not knowing exactly where the LRT station and parking, you know, would land, thought it might be needed for that project in some manner. But that doesn't seem to be the case, but there still could, you know, we have had proposals before the economy kind of went south through that area, and would expect that it would be a very positive area for, you know, potential developers to look.
To incorporate that property along with other properties to do a major redevelopment, correct? Yeah. Because I don't see us just selling that as-is, just the building.
Correct. It's only about an acre, so it wouldn't, it would be difficult to do anything substantial on it, other than what's there today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'd move to approve the lease assignment between the city of Eden Prairie and Lighthouse Day Care for the city-owned property located at 8098 Glen Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Any other business to bring forth to the Council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.